We've already talked about some of this, we just, I don't think we have any, not a choice, but it's, it's something that's.
It's needed.
It's needed, we're, we're, we can, I know there's a little bit of expense up front here, um, but as he said, our current inspector is on leave, so we're spending more right now in, in outsourcing fees. We find an experienced person, they would come in and be able to probably hit the ground running. Um, plus then they can do all that work over the winter and then as our previous inspector does come back at some point, then we have both to go forward in the spring. That's, I think, the biggest, that. I'm the one who actually said we should seriously.
So, I mean, if we authorize this, is that, is this something that we have to go outside to go recruit, or is this a?
We do have, uh, we do have some potential candidates. The, say, West Fargo is creating their own building inspections department, so I know more engineering is, there's some shuffling going on there. But there are some individuals locally that might be able to do this.
Are you, are you looking at like a November first, December first potential start, or would you probably?
As soon as possible. As soon as we could get.
Get through the process.
Yeah.
We know there's a need right now, just we're short-staffed.
If, if we're not able to find a good fit candidate, just through our own searching.
Right.
Such as Sir myself, um, then we'd go to a placement agency like we have on other positions. We've had fairly good success with that too, so.
All my promotions to approve the full-time building inspector position.
One second. Chelsea makes the motion, Brian makes the second. So I'll roll call this one just because, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
So let's, uh, yeah, let's proceed with the plan, see if we can, uh, that, see if we can get some.
Do we need a, I should have asked this question, do we need a budget amendment?
That will be coming at you.
Okay.
You'll be since two. Yeah, there's, yeah.
Be other reasons, definitely.
Yeah, we, we have budget amendments coming.
We've got a number of other things that are affecting the budget, and this is but one.
Yes.
Yep. So, okay.
So shall we move along to the next?
Yes.
On that note.
This is an exciting one, so.
Nobody wanted to stay in here.
Now the fun stuff starts, I thought the other stuff.
Now the fun starts and now what you say.
Exactly.
All right, Brian, you got this one, let's see what you got.
Find my notes here real quick.
Everybody's.
No, this is a discussion, I want to focus on a discussion, uh, not looking for any action from council tonight on this. Utility rates, we've discussed some of these utility rates over the past couple of months, and actually it's an ongoing discussion. The last time we discussed utility rates, we, we're waiting to address more than just one utility, so we're not going and updating our fees every couple of months, going and introducing changes. What I'd like to do is introduce some all at one time, say, here's what we're going to do, and have a time period of when this is going to take effect and give people plenty of notice. The first one that we have, where we had some discussion off lately, or a discussion on this lately, was the vector fee. Where we left off was conversation having that fee be at two fifty. Just bringing that up is that's where our last conversation was. We had bring that up with a, when we do a proposory increase for council's consideration, that's where we're at. That would cover at two fifty, that would cover maybe one to two aerial sprays, if necessary, plus our contract with Cascony Vector Control to, to skill control prevention efforts throughout our community. It would also help with paying for the chemical used for truck-based spraying. We, over the summer, we are very effective. Yeah, overall, when you're talking big picture, we are fairly effective compared to a lot of other communities that had Cascony Vector Control. You heard that from Ben Prather, the director of Cascony Vector, a couple of months ago, when he was here to talk about that. But the two fifty would give us, like I said, one to two aerials, should cover our contract. Not a whole lot more. If we don't have to use aerial sprays, then it gives us the ability to put funds towards improving our truck-based spraying or other mobile-based sprays, like the county has a UTV, uh, that they do spraying with, things like that. But that's where we left off with vector control. Forestry, forestry is the one utility I don't have any worries about, that one's doing all right. As for solid waste, solid waste, our current rate is twenty-one fifty. Come the new year, we're going to have an increase of what we pay waste management. The twenty-one fifty is a little higher than what we pay waste management, that's supposed to cover some of our costs for compost. We went with twenty-one fifty, where we were originally talking was around twenty-three. A twenty-three would have given us a little bit more for covering our compost activities. Overall, our compost site has been fairly successful, a lot of, it's been fairly well-received. Uh, the problems that we've had out, where we've been collecting compost before are still present to some degree, but have been reduced drastically.
Our staff time, it was needed to, and it was reduced.
Yeah, our staff does maintain it, but not near what we did before, plus it doesn't create as much of an eyesore we're used to having just in a road right away against the fence. This is out of the way a little bit. If we were to increase the trash recycling or solid waste fee to right around twenty-three or just a little bit higher than twenty-three dollars, that would give us capacity to absorb the rate increase that we'd have for waste, from waste management, and it would also give us a little bit of funding for continued improvements and covering, mainly covering our cost for those dumpsters out of the compost site. It would give us the ability to rent a wood chipper, we did that here a few weeks ago, where we chipped some, chipped down some of the brush pile. So there are, there'd be wood chips available for city projects or for residents. We don't have that at the point where we'd be advertising out for residents right now, but ideal situations, we'd be able to do that in the future. But that rate, in order to do that, would need to be around twenty-three or just above twenty-three dollars. So we could be at a break-even point, and that's just based on what we're looking at for this year's activities. For sewer, if we, when I, when we do start sending sewage to Fargo, that rate is going to be in the ballpark of three dollars per thousand gallons. Right now, we charge residents a dollar eighty-five per thousand gallons. So, as we're sending sewage to Fargo, we would be at a loss for.
But we're not sending all our sewage to Fargo, so it isn't a dollar for dollar.
Well, currently, we're barely at a break-even, or we're really just covering operations, we're not, we're covering operations, we're not covering capital.
So correct.
So we're not able to do a whole lot for additional improvements to sewer at this time. We've had some problems with lift stations and different sewer elements that we haven't been able to tackle to the fullest, or where we have tackled, it introduces a loss to the sewer fund. So, we're going to need to increase that sewer rate in order to be able to handle sending sewage to Fargo. There may be opportunities where we don't have to go the full amount, get quite to the three, but three dollars is going to be our just break-even for costs to send sewage to Fargo. Currently, our base is five fifty with a dollar eighty-five per thousand gallons. One area which we could do to do a slight increase to where it isn't so drastic, to give you a ballpark, like I said, I would have this as more discussion later on, but a base maybe in the ballpark of eight or nine dollars, and then that cost per thousand around two fifty. That would make it to where we're able to send sewage to Fargo and still cover our costs and hopefully get a little bit of funding for capital improvements. Not everything, but it would help. Like I said, it's.
That's a significant increase.
It's maybe just.
Significant increase.
But if we were to send everything to Fargo, our rates are going to be significantly higher than four dollars. If we were to send all the sewage to Fargo, we'd be looking ballpark more in that four fifty range per thousand gallons. Because we have to cover our costs or operations still, and improvements still to send that. So it's not to, it's really to cover our costs and start being able to cover that cap, those capital improvements. That is not doing a drastic improvement to capital at the time. We have not had a rate study done on sewer. Now we're going to get into the fun one, water. We've received a preliminary, uh, findings from rate study from Midwest Transportation Group, they're working with North Public Finance Authority, and in order to really be in an ideal situation, or ideal covering our costs of operations, maintenance, capital, uh, compliance with loans through the SRF program, our rates would have to skyrocket. I don't know a better way of saying it. We're talking at a base in that thirties range, thirty-dollar range, that is not unheard of in other communities. Also, cost per thousand gallons would be increased significantly. If we were to do some adjustments to water, what we could do is slowly work our way up. Increase the base, you know, one idea could be increase the base to twenty dollars and then go three fifty per thousand. And then a year, six months later, a year later, have another tier. Depends on what water solution we do. If we do water treatment, which would be fairly expensive, and we'd have to have a big jump in our rate to cover those costs, there might be the possibility of connecting water to Fargo, but the timeline for that would be likely at least a couple of years out, because it would take time for Fargo to get that line to us. The other option, which is the quickest turnaround, it makes it to where everybody has the same water quality, is connect to Casserole. Casserole, their base fee is, I believe, twenty-seven dollars, and their cost per thousand gallons is five dollars and forty cents. That's what they charge residents. Bulk user is a little lower for the cost per thousand gallons, but you're still going to, the, if we go Casserole, the recommendation would be bring everybody to the same cost that Casserole is. So, everything is the same across the board. So either way, we're looking at significant increases that still would not cover our base, what we need to do for covering our costs of maintenance and operations of our water system. Because we would have additional costs on top of what Casserole has, such as getting off-water meters, maintaining water lines if we have a water leak, doing those repairs, installing gate valves. So there's a lot of different costs that we're going to have in addition to just connecting Casserole. But there are ways where we could phase that on. Casserole would be likely the quickest option to get cleaner water, more, more desirable water. I will be meeting with them tomorrow to start having some conversations, see, hey, where are the possibilities, timeline-wise, everything, but with the new wire tower going up, it is a possibility where we could have that connection next year, from my understanding. I can't speak for Casserole, but from previous conversations, I could see that to where it is a possibility. That water tower, they need to have that online before the middle school opens, so you're looking at, at the latest August. Every indication is they'd like to see it earlier, but.
They're shooting.
No guarantee, they're shooting for late June, but they're committed more on the August timeline, and hopefully it can be sooner. So, if we go Casserole, we would have an increase. Kindred, for example, they're on Casserole. Uh, their base fee, I want to say it was around twenty-seven, twenty-eight, but then cost per thousand gallons was six fifty-five, I believe, is what, uh, we were told. Would they increase their rate? I don't know. It's been that for a little while, but they, I can see where they, they might have that. Can't speak for Kindred. Other communities around the area have had that also, talking with some folks, uh, south of here, in like Richmond County and south, they're taught, they're going through rates that are up in the base of upper forties into fifties, and then cost per thousands, talking seventy-eight dollars. So it's not unheard of, it's just a new concept here, and it's, it will be painful, whatever rate increase we would have. But, we have to cover our costs, and so, and that would give the community assurances of better quality water. Because that is a complaint, we've heard it tonight even, of discolored water, that orange-colored water. We'll be doing hydrant flushing soon, and folks will see it again. So, with Casserole or any other water service, our goal would be to get rid of that over time. We'd still have some discoloration for a while, we'd have to clean out lines. If we go to any other service like Casserole or Fargo, we'd need to clean those lines out. It's not going to get everything, but it'll help. So we're going to have some costs in preparing for connecting to another provider also. So, I wanted to have that, to bring that up to you, so you're aware of it. Like I said, not asking for action tonight, if you guys want to discuss it more, we can. But I think we need to have some dialogue of water rates, utility rates in general, because we're playing a lot of catch-up. And hopefully we could get these rates stable, or stabilized where we're not talking rate increases as frequently as we have to, or have been, so. We're looking at stabilizing the funds so we're able to actually pay for those improvements and repairs that we have.
Do you know what West Fargo pays for Fargo?
West Fargo.
For the water rate?
I want to say it's around, it's around three dollars, but West, or Fargo is reviewing their rates right now. The important thing to keep in mind too is Fargo, my understanding is they subsidize their utility with sales tax.
But they try and give that rate to West Fargo.
Says here that they pay a service fee of seven bucks a month, but they place, pay seven dollars for every thousand gallon.
For, for West Fargo?
For every West Fargo.
But their bulk user, I believe, is around that three, three and a quarter range, yeah. So, and we're still looking, possibly are we even able to connect to Fargo or not? You get into service area, territories, and legal.
Will be in the next couple.
Yeah.
Not until that roof comes down.
Yeah. So, if you're looking for the quickest solution of, here's what I did, here's how we get the clean, cleanest water quickest, or clean water quickest, Casserole would do that. Also, everybody has the same water then. That, everybody in the community has the same water. So that's an appeal with Casserole, where if you go Fargo, then you still have a difference in the water quality, you know, Fargo's water is softened. Different source for water, so when you gain water from Fargo, it's river water versus Casserole, it's aquifer base, is my understanding. So you've got different types of water. You could get, still get good water quality from either one, but they are different types of water that we're dealing with.
Yeah, the Fargo Treatment Plant, obviously, is going to filter it, so it's better even than the well.
Like I said, if we connect to Fargo, it's a difference.
Yeah, and I bring up Fargo, you know, often, just because, well, one, I, I do like that it's softened, obviously that's great. It's a, it's great water, but two, it's just because I feel like there's some unknowns, so do we want to dismiss it? You know, completely, just, or do we find out the answers, I guess?
Russ, I think you're need to, you need to talk with Fargo, because when they hooked up the south end of West Fargo, uh, they brought their line over from their six million gallon tank up by Deer Creek, I'm pretty sure. You know, they had a six million gallon tank in Deer Creek?
That was a million.
Six.
It's not six, I don't think.
Well, it's really, really, really big.
It's big, I, I agree with you, it's a big building.
Okay, fair enough.
It's really, really, really big, and I think that's where they brought the water from, you know, just the other side of, of our street.
And we have been in conversations with Fargo, so we've been talking to both sides, we also have AirSA, has WaterSA, they've been working on. So we are in conversations with both entities, like I said, we, that might be a legal issue and a timing issue.
I just don't think we should just go with the easiest solution.
Yeah.
We're exploring them, Russ.
They're, they're, they're very motivated to have us connect to Fargo, they really want us.
It's just a matter of whether we do this, and are we going to get the transmission line to us without raising other issues.
I was going to say, because Casserole might be, be provide water to everybody else around.
He pointed out what I was wrong, it's not six, it's only five and a half.
Okay.
Exaggerating, come on.
I read.
No, but I mean, yes, we got to talk about that, the only thing is, even if we hooked into that, do they have the capacity there to handle both entities? Or do we have to get that transmission line from somewhere else? That's part of what these conversations are about, I know.
And like I said, we've had, AirSA's been working on a water study also, to help review the options and what are the possibilities, so we can add that back to the council.
Russ, it comes down to our people are going to talk to their people, how's that?
I just want to make sure we're talking to all the people.
Yes.
Yeah, I feel like it's a big decision, so I, I would like, love to see everything mapped out. Split on a platter.
Yep.
I think that's something, yeah, we can, no, and I know that's something we're going to, we'll be discussing more about that as well, so. Anybody else have any other questions for right now, or?
I guess my only question would be, I think this discussion and action related to rates in general, whether we make a determination where we go with water, that kind of stuff, should be done sooner rather than later.
Yeah, don't disagree.
And, because we generally need to give at least a ninety-day notice of changes, I think, should be a norm versus sixty or less.
No, I agree.
So, but I think, I, I think there's longer-term stuff related to water, I agree with you, but there's at least, based on his information, a couple of key things we probably could potentially do some incremental adjustments to get us started.
And I think it's, it's going to come down to, we're going to have to decide, you know, how do we increment these steps at this point?
Yeah.
Because that's, we all know this is coming, this is way long, super long, we're doing.
Yeah.
But it's to minimize the pain, but yet make sure we get back in the graces of the state and other entities who are watching our rates quite intensely at this point.
Yeah.
So, all right, any other questions on this, guys, here, let's, we're going to have to, yeah, I know. Interesting evening, all right, we'll move on to fifteen here.
You know, we, we've had quite a few short meetings, so we had to have.
Yeah, I know.
A longer one with more, uh, to it. The next one here is a discussion of, um, proposal of considering purchasing of a new road grader.
Is that this?
Yes, I'll be talking about that here in just a minute. That's a proposal that we've received. Road graders are, so if you don't look at the price and get scared away on it, road graders are typically one of your most expensive pieces of equipment for a public works department. It also is, as you could tell from earlier conversations, fairly important. Our current road grader is a ninety-three Champion seven thirty-eight, uh, pretty undersized. Does not have the other features like a V plow in the front or a wing. We're able to rotate between a straight blade or a tooth blade, that's about all we could do. It also is fairly intensive for individual drive, it isn't something we could just have a, any public works employee just hop in there and go blade the roads. They do, they can really mess up their roads pretty easily, so the training is significant with our current one. Also reliability of equipment, when you start getting into older pieces of equipment, such as a nineteen ninety-three road grader, the reliability when you need it in a snowstorm, or when conditions are bad, is not always there. I mentioned it's undersized, the one that we have, quite a few of our roads, it's difficult for our staff to actually maintain the road, because the blade doesn't have, the grader doesn't have enough power to bite into the road. We are able to do some roads, but when the road does pack down, it's hard to get a, any adjustment into the road and improving the grade quality.
Our road grader needs to be sold to the Smithsonian Institute as a museum piece, got it, we need to, it's something that we need to start.
I was giving the, I was giving a nice way of saying it, so.
It's a known issue, we need to.
We've depreciated it multiple times.
Yeah, it's.
What we have done, what we have done, last year, you may recall, we joined a group called South Sourcewell. Sourcewell is a cooperative purchasing group for government and, uh, like school districts and government and agencies, where it's similar to state contract pricing, where if you capitalize on a state contract pricing, contract, or a state contract pricing, you don't have to go out for a bid. They bid it with different providers, or different equipment dealers, or whatever the top, the good you're looking for, or service you're looking for, they bid that out for you, um, as one whole cooperative purchasing agreement. Sourcewell has this for both Caterpillar and John Deere, so we did receive proposals from both John Deere and Caterpillar. We worked with both, uh, dealers in town here to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, because everybody has their own little niche of how do you phrase it, or what type of feature they have, so we wanted to make sure that we were comparing each feature as much as we could, get most identical machine possible to meet our public works department needs. Uh, we actually found that Sourcewell contract pricing was actually cheaper than the state contract pricing, so we get a better deal with that. You get about forty, forty-two percent off, uh, with John Deere, and it's right around that forty percent off with, forty, forty-two percent with Caterpillar also. So, quite a bit, quite, quite a big discount from, uh, what they are brand-new without any discounting at all. The price for this equipment after trade-in, or before trade-in is three hundred five thousand for the John Deere. The Caterpillar came in about twenty, twenty-five thousand more, when you compare apples to apples, their features.
They're giving us a sympathy trade-in the way it was here.
I see that for eleven grand for the current one.
I've, I found, last year I looked up our grader, found some comparables for a, online, uh, just purchasing like through like eBay thing, or just different online auction deals, and it was running for around anywhere from ten to twelve thousand dollars, so. This is right in the ballpark, but yeah, it's, uh, basically, we'll take it off your hands and.
So we can scrap it.
Yeah. So what we're looking at is total purchase price would be two hundred ninety, ninety-five thousand dollars. Or approximately that, give you the more exact, two ninety-five, two ninety-five thousand, two dollars and forty cents. That's if we pay for it straight up. Interest rates are fairly low, uh, we could finance through John Deere, get an interest rate of around three point eight, three point eight seven five percent, I believe. Three point eight five percent. Uh, if we did a hundred thousand dollar down payment and then had a hundred thousand. Uh, if we did a hundred thousand dollar down payment and then had a hundred thousand dollar balloon payment at the end, then we would be able to, and with our trade-in, that would make it to where our annual payments, we'd have six annual payments of twenty-two thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars. That makes it to where it's very affordable within our annual budget for the highway fund. The highway fund is a very healthy fund, right now, uh, I must say we're in the ballpark around eight hundred thousand dollars within the highway fund. So we do have the funds to be able to pay for it either straight up or to finance it, whatever route the council would like to go, if you see the need to purchase the road grader.
If we were gonna do this, I'd say we finance it, cause the interest rates are lower, that helps us with our budget, just for cash flow purposes.
And the reason I brought up the hundred thousand dollar down payment and then a balloon and a hundred at the end, spreads the cost down, so we're financing a good chunk, but we're keeping that annual payment to where we're still could work with if we have another piece of equipment that we need to replace in the future. I mean, we're gonna be talking in snowplow in the next couple of years again. Uh, so we're able to actually cash flow this a lot easier. Um, but either option, whatever council would like to do, we could do.
John Deere, it actually looks like it has a better warranty on it.
Yeah, it does have a good warranty.
In terms of capabilities, I'm assuming.
Apples to apples.
John Deere and Caterpillar are basically the top, two top in the.
Yep.
It's just a preference of if we choose them. You're almost, you have the, would you look at this as your set of precedents now that if we buy this, this equipment, we would potentially, if we need similar things or whatever, you would try and go through, John Deere created a relationship with our D O or something?
We would.
Cause I know we still have Bobcat.
We, we do have, we do have a good relationship with uh, the John Deere dealer, which is our D O. Uh, we would obviously compare Sourcewell, cause when you have a big piece of equipment like that, you're probably best off comparing, you know, doing comparisons to see what's the best dollar for community. Um, equipment is a little different, I think, than comparing like vehicles. Vehicles, standardizing them makes a little more sense to equipment, it's what fits your capabilities, cause each, each one has a little different feature sometimes or how they position controls and things like that. Uh, the staff's preference, public works staff's preference was the John Deere.
Okay.
So, that's why we're discussing it, not only cause it was cheaper, but their preference originally was John Deere. I asked them to price out Caterpillar also, so we have a good comparison.
So right now, no, I was gonna say, so right now, if we put the down payment a hundred thou, a hundred thou down, uh, right now we're averaging around twelve and a half per month on our highway tax income to the city, so I mean, basically we've got two months of payment in the state that we could use and pay that yearly payment, so I mean, that's not bad.
Nope.
You know, you take a hundred grand out of the highway fund without having to reduce it, we can finance it.
Well, this is probably one of our largest.
Yes, this is your largest.
Looking at a front end loader or another snowplow, not in this range.
Lo, loaders are typically around a hundred fifty to two hundred range. Uh, graders are your most expensive, your most complex piece of equipment.
The, the thing is, we need a grader, cause this one can hardly grade a kid's garden. It's not heavy enough to do what we need right now, and it's pointless somehow to even hit some of this stuff.
It's twofold, it's that, but he brought it up earlier, is the expectation of our citizens now is that, you know, when it snows, we gotta get out there. We don't wanna deal with down equipment, we can't, you know, the efficiencies, capabilities, all those types of things makes these guys more efficient and able to clear more snow, these types of things, grade the roads, like you said, all that kind of stuff. It's, it's, it's multiple things we benefit from.
And this grader, this grader would have, uh, just looking really quick if they had it in there. Um, it would have the V plow in the front.
Right, and then a blade.
It would also have the blade on the side.
Yep.
Uh, it also has uh, what they're referring to as like a floating blade feature, so when you're plowing, the operator can focus on the road, not as much on the blade, cause the blade would just sit, just like a plow blade would. Right now our grader, our operators have to maintain, they have to watch that blade constantly while they're blading the road, so their focus could be on the road, not the blade, so. Um, like answering other questions that you have about the grader, I know this is a big purchase, but.
So that you don't, it doesn't get so old, I mean, is there like a timeline where you would replace it? I mean, cause you talked about six years.
We would, we would work with John Deere to identify the best replacement times. Um, sometimes just watching the market to see, hey, do they have a need for a grader that has the right hours or the hours that we need, otherwise.
I'm sure they would let us know, cause I'm sure they'd like to get it in one of our hands, so I'm sure when the time is about right.
Typically dealerships, we have this relationship with uh, the Bobcat dealer, for example, our skid steer, we get a new skid steer every year for a couple thousand dollars, we have an hour limit. If we wanna keep that skid steer for then on, we'd say we wanna keep that, we're good to go. But, we get a new one every year, it works out great for the dealership because they're able to get a slightly used piece of equipment. A lot of times we get a few extra items added into there, because they, the sales folks know what is going to sell good the next time, so they want that slightly used piece of equipment, cause contractors are typically looking for that slightly used piece of equipment. And then they're able to flip out that used piece of equipment very easily and come out ahead pretty well.
I think that'll be the same thing that happens here too.
And for us, as you can tell, forty-two percent discount plus there's another twenty-four, twenty-five thousand taken off, cause we're a customer already of our D O, I mean, you're talking two hundred, almost two hundred forty thousand dollar discount, five hundred eleven thousand dollar piece of equipment, that's a pretty good drop in price right there.
A lot of markup on that.
Yep. Like I said, not cheap piece of equipment.
What you're really paying for is a big difference, right?
What we'd be looking at is a turnaround time of a couple months, maybe a little sooner, but we could also time it to where we could have that hundred thousand dollar down payment due and delivery of the grader come the new year, so it doesn't hit us this year, and then we'd start that twenty-two thousand dollar annual payments in January of twenty twenty-one.
Right.
We could do that.
That'd be a better way to cash flow, it's just, do we want, cause I suppose we have to put a down payment on it or something, right?
At the time of delivery. So, we also, I will be coming to the council in November with the streets budget, so we could have that budgeted as an expense in the streets budget for next year.
Well, what's the time to get one, you said?
Couple months, if I, if I put the order in now.
You're talking?
December is likely when you'd be looking at, so that's what I was going, we could just have.
They say just make it January, cause you're not talking about basically one, one to two weeks max.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd say that too, yeah, if we're gonna come down to that technical window, that's perfect.
So then we would just include it into the budget then for next year.
Yep.
So can I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Brent to purchase the road grader with the um, cash flowing by putting a hundred thousand dollar payment on it. What's the term, six years?
Five, wasn't it?
Five or six.
Six, it's eighty-four, it's eighty-four months.
Eighty-four months, and then with the hundred thousand dollar balloon payment at the end.
That, that's seven years.
It's seven years.
Yeah, it comes out to be seven total.
Yeah, with the balloon payment at the end.
Yeah, you have six payments and.
Six annual payments and a one balloon.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, thanks for doing the math though.
Dave made a motion on uh, purchasing the grader, he made it for a second.
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second, we were spending money, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes, but did we say it was the John Deere one?
Oh, sorry, I'm mad, I'm mad, sorry, based on the proposal provided by the city ministry for the John Deere unit.
Just say as proposed.
As proposed.
I'll run it again then, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
You don't want anybody getting a, switching on us doing that.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Coming, Caterpillar showing up one day.
Alright, on to something a little more seasonal, Christmas lights.
Okay. What we are putting together is a propos, well, we have a proposal for the purchase of new Christmas lights and banners. Uh, the Christmas light you see, Foria Brian put it up on the screen, this is what the Christmas light would be. Um, just trying to pull up my quote here.
So these are basic, these are like five foot?
I believe they're the five foot, five foot ninety. Yep, it's the five foot one with ninety bulbs.
Fancy.
Oh, it is fancy. Uh, but anyways.
Fancy four.
These will be connected to the streetlights. Uh, in addition, we have banners, those are up on the SharePoint too. Uh, there's red and white banners, and the intention would be banners would be all along Conroy Road seventeen. It would include seventy banners, so we could get basically all the streetlights along Conroy Road seventeen and have a few extra banners in case, you know, wind damage or anything happens to them. Uh, what it would also include is thirty of the snowflake Christmas lights. We would not give us Christmas lights to cover that whole corridor, but we would focus on starting from the south end where the very south light poles are. Um, or by uh, the, the game of the Estadio National Park, Park Drive, that area, and then going north. And we'd just go north as far as we can with the Christmas lights until we run out. And you'd have Christmas lights on one side, banners on the other, and then as you get farther north, you would see just the banners. Christmas lights are the more expensive feature, they're four hundred forty dollars each, so we're not proposing to go the whole stretch right off the bat. What we would be proposing is a cost share with the Lions Club, Cory would be proposing this to, Cory and I would be proposing this to the Lions Club as a cost share. If the Lions Club did not participate, um, then we would just scale this down in half, so we would get fifteen Christmas lights and we would do thirty-five banners and just work our way incrementally to this. Um, that way we could still replace the lights we have, the lights we have have been the same wreath ones for years where half the bulbs are burnt out and you can't see them.
So nostalgic.
Yeah. We could still use them in some areas. So what we're trying to do, we're trying to do, as you know, is trying to increase community engagement and pride and that appeal of driving down our main street. Our main street right now is Conroy Road seventeen, so it's, highlight that area.
It'd be nice to have this up before we do the holiday.
Yes.
Holiday and Forest.
And Forest, yeah, that's right. Should have a Ganzo, we might get, okay, but I mean, something like that, again, that would just brighten up the area for that.
So the city's cost would be fourteen thousand dollar, or up to fourteen thousand dollars. If the Lions Club would participate, then we'd split this cost in half, and it would come in just under fourteen. So the luck of the city share not to exceed that. So what we're looking for is, if the council would like to make these purchases, primarily the area for funding this, we didn't really have expenses for the state this year for Bean Days. Bean Days was fairly successful at raising funds through sponsorships, so the city's community engagement fund or line item uh, really wasn't used, so we would use that. Uh, and then any remaining balance would come from special projects line item that we have within our general fund too. So between those two areas, we'd have enough to cover this.
Okay, two questions, do, do we have some money still in that account for the holiday event?
Under special projects, we would, I believe we would.
Cause I don't know if we were gonna just save the Bean Days money for next year or use it for the holiday event, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we should have enough um, within that.
And then the, you said we'd get fourteen or fifteen if the Lions don't contribute? Do you know how far, how far north that would get us?
It'd basically get us about, about before we stop going south.
Okay, so nothing by the elementary school.
No, it, that, we'd be stretching it to get up that far, or we could stagger it where we. But it doesn't have near the impact of lights longer, cause those poles are already staggered, those poles right now are staggered, so. Uh, but if we were to do, yeah.
Half lit, lit, half lit, lit, half.
There you go.
One every six poles.
Well, I mean, we could have the old ones, the new one, the old one, the new one.
Since you want some, just don't.
Yeah, you want some, you want them, yeah.
No, see, I, I think it would be really cool to find a new version of that old one, like down the road if we got more. But um, yeah, I mean, I, I wish we could see him go at least to the elementary school if the Lions doesn't contribute.
Yeah.
Should we send a note?
So.
I made a motion, we approve the spending of fourteen thousand dollars. I'm sorry, I wanna get moving, it's almost nine o'clock, and this is a good use of this money.
Okay, so Dave made some motion, Chelsea does a second. Okay, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Alright, passed unanimously, moving along. Jim?
Yes.
You have a very condensed version of the engineer report.
Well, I've got a couple things here that have come up in the last couple days, so.
Go ahead.
We'll go through them efficiently and quickly, so.
Attaboy, alright.
Uh, the first thing on our list, it is grant application season, the transportation alternatives program grant application is out, this is one that we've put in for the past three years, administered through the North Department of Transportation. Uh, this application is due to Metro Cog on November, I just tried it. November, oh, right here, November twenty-seventh. So in the past, Councilwoman Johnson has done the uh, kinda the legwork on it, getting the support letters and, and all of that, and then I've supplemented it with uh, whatever we've needed technically to put that application together, so. Um, I did give her a copy of the overall master plan that has been submitted in years past and a location map from last year's application, and uh, she could mark up on that what her wishes are, so. Um, I would like to get going on this if it's something the city would wanna pursue, just because it's uh, doesn't leave you a lot of time when you could have to get a council meeting in there to kinda discuss it, so.
Another question down to the wire.
Well, when you have to get council meetings in there, it's not.
We do have to get letters though, so that's the only thing, we definitely wanna like, make sure we have the time to do this, but um, so like this one that you gave me, we never did put in letters for that from Brink to seventy-six, we never.
We, we put in the general ones that we had had from years past, but eventually.
Yeah, that's what we did.
So we should identify the next area that you'd like to pursue and then get letters on that.
Okay, so remind me, are, we don't have grants to go from Brink to seventy-six, so that's what we wanna work on.
Well, that is what you wanna do, we will have a path starting at Brink's going along Lakeview back to the school, but if you wanna keep going north, that, that is an option we can do.
Well, of course, I would love to go for Wall Avenue, but.
There is sidewalk.
That may not make sense.
There is sidewalk to nowhere over by uh, Prairie View too, that.
Sidewalks to nowhere? No, I know, I know.
Would you prefer I call it like a stage? So, I mean, it's something, something to think about, so. Um, most of the technical stuff on this is fairly standard, we've put in for the same thing, so it's readily made up, it's just a matter of throwing it all together, so.
And I think we're gonna get a lot of commercial up by the roundabout, I mean, there's a lot of potential stuff happening there, so I, I think we're, you know, we should just go for that.
Okay.
Go up to the roundabout.
So, I'll work with Councilwoman Johnson to get that going and get it.
If you guys agree to yes?
Anything on that?
Well, in some regards, it's, it's, I mean, are you, I'm assuming you're providing, getting feedback from Park District, right? Or.
We would like a lot of support from them, yes, so.
I, I think that's why I asked the question, I, ideally they would have a plan that this would feed into, so. I mean, in some regards, this should be the responsibility of the Park Board to do this, but that's a different topic.
Um, this, Park Boards can't be sponsored, this actually has to be sponsored by the county because it's five thousand people or, if you're under five thousand people, the county has to be the sponsor for it, so. Um, this one has been historically a difficult one to get, but I think you still keep your name.
Um, this one has been historically a difficult one to get, but I think you still keep your name in the hat. Just to show you're serious about it. This is a, uh, graded against or scored against. West Fargo and Fargo and all of those, so.
And I don't know if there's maybe a conversation we can have with Metro Cog to see, you know, what we can.
Yeah.
Cause they're into trails and all those stuff.
Yeah, they're the ones who rank them. Maps that they showed, it, you can tie in and support some of that work, then we can show the visualization of that effort.
Yeah, that's what that master plan does. We'll update that master plan to put some more subdivisions on there, but. I've found that you have very good success if you're linking things.
Right.
And I think we'll talk about it and make sure that this is the route we wanna go. I mean, we do have like due drive that is connecting things, but. There's not, you know, there's just a bit of discussion maybe that would be had if we.
I would be questioning the side of the road we wanna do on. That's one thing that I'd be curious. If you wanna take it up the east side or continue along the west side.
Okay, we'll, we'll sit down.
Yep.
Make sure this break.
Second thing. Uh, Third and Fourth Street, we did talk with the contractor and we got the standard weather holds. Um, they do have to do asphalt work on Seventy-S sixth Avenue, so his plan was to do it at the same time as that, so they have to get that done. So if they do that little patch over around Fourth Street at that time, he said that's really the temperature dependent thing. The, what work on Third is uh, concrete, you can use blankets, you can use uh, other ways of doing things in a little bit lesser temperatures on asphalt, so. Um, I think that we should do a, on a large northern improvement tonight. We did follow up with him and. They said they could get it done this year. He'd like something just on the record that to go ahead and do it, so.
Down Friday, I mean.
I thought we approved it.
You approved it contingent upon him being able to get it done this year, so. We followed up with him and he said yes. So you think that's good enough? Yeah. Oh, never mind, we don't need it, we, we're good. Okay, that's.
Well, if he doesn't, I mean, there is still a slight chance he might not get it done, but.
If, yeah, if we add some stuff, let's hope we can get that to work, yeah, he's thinking Ken, that's better than.
Yeah. Right, right, yep, yep, yep. Um, Prairie View paving was completed on Friday. We, they started it Friday morning and finished it Friday night. I think it turned out pretty well. Came in under on our mixed quantity by hundred and some odd tons, so we underran our, what we thought we were gonna take, so. That's good. Um. Yeah, that's all done.
It's good weather to do it.
It was excellent, yeah, they, they planned that right. I mean, they could've done it earlier in the week and they looked at the forecasts, said. Friday looks like the better, the better day, so yeah, it was, it, it turned out to be a pretty, pretty nice day. I reached out to our Maple Grove contractor this morning and it's been too wet.
Yeah.
Trying to get a schedule out of them and.
I figured that.
Pulling teeth. Uh, Cub Creek, all the underground is done in Cub Creek. They started to prep a couple of the roads. There's still Lomar fill, it has to be hauled in on the east side. The weather is really giving them fits with hauling that fill. There are very specific requirements for packing that in to get that. Uh, to get FEMA's approval for Lomaring that, so. I anticipate that that one might not get paved and concreted this year. I think that. They haven't quite waved the red flag or white flag, but um. I kinda got a hint of that it might be coming. They're giving it a valiant effort. They were out moving dirt last week, last Saturday, so. Um, give them credit for that. Every, every week, every week starts with rain day. And then it's just crazy. Uh, the last thing I had was the uh, shared use path on seventeen. We had talked about this last time about. The contractor had requested an ex- an extension. Cause of the weather, can't get to the clay that they're gonna use to build it up. Right, if they open it up, it's gonna turn into an absolute swimming pool. I did go back and look into the um. Agreement with Park and Rec, the. The uh, deadline is July eighth of twenty twenty for the um, money to be spent. I did talk with them this morning and said that if the weather is not conducive to getting it done, it has to be hit and hit hard. In the spring. Um, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, Breton. We, we are gonna. Kinda talk to them a little bit more about what they can and can't get done this year. The opt- the preference is to get at least some of it done. I'd really like to see from the school. To or through Chestnut, get that high stuff done this year. It shows more, it shows more um. Being spent on the project this year and it's less that has to be done next year, so. That, that's what I would suggest you push for is the, try and get that south half done or a south portion.
Get the higher ground.
Yeah, whatever we can do.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's, that's my thought too, so. Yeah. Um, I will run with that back to the contractor. Let me check my list. That's all I had for you this week. Next meeting, I'll have the standard update on all the other projects.
Just real quick, are they being able to do it all on Seventy-S sixth, trying to get that thing?
Oh, Seventy-S sixth Avenue, Seventy-S sixth Avenue, the concrete is done. Um, the paving at least. They did aprons and that. They did curb and gutter on Friday. They've got a little bit, I think, left on that. And then the uh, far east end, there's an area of transition that's asphalt. And that is still yet to be done. And that's when they'll do Third Streets at that time. Um, the aprons are, are all done. But there's still a lot of work to be done behind the curbs, shared use path, tie-ins, grading, striping, streetlights, everything starts with streetlights. That, that's gonna, we gotta talk about that. Streetlights on Seventy-S sixth and the Adel. And Adel, yep. Streetlights on Seventy-S sixth and Adel. They'll do those at the same time, so. We'll get a better update on that tomorrow at the contractor's meeting.
Glad you heard things from one more. I haven't heard anything for a while, so I'm just curious too.
Yeah.
Uh, one question, um, the, we approved um, the lights in town on the main street. Replacing them, retrofitting them, right? Just the, just the heads, right? Is that what we're doing?
It's retrofitting, changing the bulbs and.
To match.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
That was, you said a longer lead time? Do you have like a idea?
Were. My understanding is they've gotten the parts in, they were trying to schedule a time.
Okay.
Uh, but yes, there was a lot longer lead time than what they initially expressed to us. Uh, so I know Adam has been pushing them a couple of times a week now to dig it out here, get this done. Uh, we'd like to have that up as soon as possible, cause we do have some burnt out bulbs. And it would be nice to have it all consistent.
So I, I'm sure there's something I can bring up, but where are, I've not driven out of town that direction, but. Do our lights go away to a hundred?
No, no. They get you to about liberty.
Since we kinda have done it kind of at both ends, that, that intersection is real busy now, right? There's a lot more.
Well, you haven't even come close to doing both ends. You have everything north of Seventy-S sixth that has to be done.
A little bit of a time there, Russ, we'll get that.
That's more, that to me is.
We, we can, we can look at it as a future CIP project, as we're talking CIP over the winter here, that could be another project of. You know, try to scale them.
So um, so back to, sorry, back to the roundabout. It's a little nitpicky thing, but the one temporary post. It's out there, light, it's still the old one. And right, that would match, that would be one of the, you'd have to convert that to.
That one might actually come out if it's the, was it the one that was the feed point?
Yeah, it's the one that was the feed point, but it's got concrete and everything, but it's right in the middle of the. Road and it's lit still.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, my assumption would be it's a feed point and they probably have it tied in still. Is it on the, it's on the southwest corner? Yeah.
It's right, it's basically right on the, it's right even, it's on the roundabout.
I thought, I would've thought that it would've come out. I, I'll, I'll look at it. I'll ask him or two.
Then they have one further down Seventy-S sixth to the west that's a wood pole. Does that stand like that?
On Seventy-S sixth?
Yes.
Beyond the roundabout?
Yes.
Does it temporarily finish?
I don't know, I, I don't know, I just.
We, we'll bring it up in our meeting tomorrow.
On the other directions, they don't go that far. It was just that one I wondered if that was already there previously and. They just pulled it up. Thank you.
Anything else? Jim? Guys, anything else? All right. Matt's not here, you picking up some slack?
I'm covering that one. Um, just a couple or a couple of things really community development. Uh, one is I asked Matt to pull me permit numbers as of today. Uh, we have a total of a hundred ten permits that have gone to the City of Forest that have been issued. Of that hundred ten permits, sixty-six have been issued for new homes. We still have eleven permits pending, nine of which are new homes. So that'll put us to seventy-five new homes this year. Previous year's forty, year before that was ballpark around twenty. So you can see the trend and that's why we were talking to building inspector position earlier. Um, we also have two commercial per, slash industrial permits. Uh, with one commercial slash industrial permit pending and then another one that was incomplete. Uh, or two that are incomplete at this time. Uh, you'll be seeing some more commercial. Property discussions in the near future, uh, like those ones that are pending. Uh, typically, commercial sites go through planning commission for designer view, so. Uh, we have some stuff like the PUD with Epic that'll be coming in about pretty soon. We also have a handful of subdivisions, applications, Southdale Farms, as you know, Maple Lakes, those have been discussions before. Uh, Hess First Edition and then there's another one that's a smaller property. Uh, Jameson Acres is called. It's just four lots doing the same thing that Hess. And then we have the Diocese's land. That's gonna be coming at you soon. Um, and then like I said, the Epic PUD, uh, they're calling it Greeley Center. Is coming at council planning commission soon.
Next month or?
I don't have the exact date on it, but Greeley Center went probably in next month.
One to two months.
Yeah, so they're gonna call it Greeley?
Greeley Center.
Forest group?
Yep.
Got it.
Go west.
Good one, I like that.
That's uh, their logic behind us.
Come on, Russ.
It only works if you've got gray hair.
Yeah, what are you talking about?
Uh, the other item, uh, council, I informed you all, but for it to be public is uh. Matt submitted his resignation. His last day will be this Friday. Uh, we're working to find a replacement as quick as possible, but also not fill it, just to fill it. We had that mentality when we hired Matt on, is making sure the person is the right fit and. You know, you did a good job for the city. Uh, we'll still see him around. Uh, he's going to the consulting side. Um, but he submitted that and last day, like I said, is Friday, so giving you a heads up about that. Those are the community development updates.
Okay, could, could I get in here?
Russ could expand.
Sure.
We uh, I've been working with Matt for the last six months on doing some uh, zoning changes for multi-family. We don't have those in place. Uh, I'd suggest you hire him as a consultant to finish that. Because you just approved the uh, second reading of a rezone for R five. Which uh.
They're gonna wanna bring.
Which it is not gonna work with beans under our current zoning regulations. Now, planning and zoning, you know, worked a year and did a, did a, a, a re. And you got through the first reading before someone on the end seat over there decided that even though he'd been at all those meetings that. That, that we hadn't coordinated with the FN home builders, so you didn't do the second reading on that one ever. Uh, what I'm saying is if he doesn't finish this one, we're not gonna go through another year long project to do something that doesn't go through.
Okay, how far along are you guys with it right now? He could, I mean, I don't know.
I believe it's basically drafted up where it'd go. And I'll talk with Matt some more. We talked briefly about it today, but we'll talk more about it later this week. Couple of days, couple of days.
But I agree with you, Russ. I mean, if we're that far along and that needs to get sealed up, I mean, we'll, we'll work out a deal.
Yep.
Really, please.
And we have.
We need to get it in place.
Oh, no, I, I get it, I just didn't know.
Yeah, and we've been talking about transition plan, so like I said, he'll still be around to help. Wrap up the loose ends, um, but like I said, hopefully we'd get a replacement in time and manner. And get them up to speed so they can keep carrying on.
Being Matt is familiar with this, let's get him to seal this up.
Yep.
Anything else on Matt's behalf?
Nope.
Let's move on to your behalf.
The only one I have is an update for you is municipal judge. Uh, she is going through the training right now. Um, there was a conference that they tried to have everybody attend. It was October. She got. Notified of it fairly late. Um, but the North Dakota Court said that she could take care of that next year, so. Um, hopefully she'd get the shadowing in with the, her assigned mentor judge. Uh, and we can be getting court, moving along here within the next couple of months, that'd be the most ideal. Uh, she knows that we're trying to get this done as soon as possible, so she was just trying to coordinate with her mentor judge to get her hours in. So, yep.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Um, I don't have anything today either, so. John, we don't have to worry about you. Dave?
Nope.
Chelsea?
Uh, just that we're working on that holiday in Forest. I'm working on Shelby. Um, looking for people to get involved and wanna be a part of the events in Forest, so.
People are asking on the Facebook site for, you know, for vendors, you know, and all that kind of stuff. Do I send it to you or Shelby?
Send it to Shelby. She's working on the.
Yep.
That's what I've been.
I mean, I'll, I'll say this, Shelby's doing a really great job. She's very motivated and she's a good worker.
Okay, that's what I assumed would happen, but I wanna make sure I was okay. Anything else, sir?
No, no, not for me.
Okay, then I'm gonna entertain an emotion.
Some of it.
Dave?
Second.
Brian, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're done. Thank you. One.
One monster.